I'd like to call the May 19th meeting of the Salina City Commission to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Vanier.
Here.
Commissioner Jolka.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Purney.
Here.
I would like to invite everyone to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now it's time for a citizens' forum, a time when citizens can come before the commission to discuss anything that is not on the official agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Guess not, we'll go on to words and proclamations.
The week of May 18th through the 24th, 2008, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of Salina, firefighter Patrick Holtein will read the proclamation.
Emergency medical services are a vital public service. All members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. The emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. The members of emergency medical services teams engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. It's appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Therefore, I John Vanier, Mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th, 2008, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme EMS: Your Life is Our Mission, and I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
And what programs, ceremonies, and activities might you have planned for the week?
The EMTs and paramedics will be visiting assisted living residences to give information concerning blood pressure, blood sugars, proper medicine use, file for life, and emergency numbers. All of our ambulances will display new temporary decals with the message EMS: Helping People One Life at a Time. Also, free candy bar coupons courtesy of Green Lantern will be given to children caught wearing a bicycle helmet while riding their bicycles. And finally, all fire stations are open for tours, so be sure to bring your family and friends by to visit.
Great, thank you very much. I have a signed copy of the proclamation for you.
The day of May 24th, 2008, as Poppy Day in the city of Salina, Dolores Holtberg, first Vice President of the American Legion Auxiliary, will read the proclamation.
Poppy Proclamation. Whereas the poppy as a memorial flower for the American war dead is a tradition which began in the years following the First World War, and whereas veterans returning to their homes in this country after World War I remembered the wild poppies which lined the devastated battlefields of France and Flanders Field, and whereas the poppy is a symbol of hope for all veterans who served this great country through military service, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary adapted the poppy as its memorial flower to pay tribute to the war dead and aid the living veteran and their family. And therefore, I John K. Vanier II, Mayor of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the 24th day of May, 2008, as Poppy Day, and urge all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this day. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of Salina, Kansas, this 19th day of May, 2008.
Are there any other special activities on the day?
We're just going to be around town at most of the stores, and we'll have a can that you can donate money and you get a poppy. If you don't donate money, you still get a poppy.
All right, very good, thank you. Sign copy for you.
The week of May 18th through the 24th, 2008, as National Public Works Week in the city of Salina, Street Superintendent Dwayne Zook will read the proclamation.
Proclamation of the city of Salina. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets and highways, storm sewers and levy systems, solid waste collection and disposal operations, municipal fleet maintenance services, water treatment and distribution, wastewater collection and treatment, engineering and inspection, public facilities, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of the communities greatly depends on these services and facilities each and every day, as well as in times of emergency and community disaster, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services and facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, I John K. Vanier II, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through May 24th, 2008, as National Public Works Week. In the city of Salina, I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions that public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. In witness thereof, I have hereto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 19th day of May, 2008. John K. Vanier II, Mayor.
Do we have any special activities planned for the week?
We had a public works barbecue last Friday, well attended by all in public works. Seems like we have a pretty busy week this week, as we have kind of maybe had a little bit out of place. We have the APWA Snow Rodeo that is being held at Melford Lake on Thursday, so we felt like we had quite a bit going, so we went ahead and held our barbecue last Friday.
Very good, thank you. Okay, we have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so we'll go on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of May 12th, 2008. Item 6.2, item pulled from agenda. Item 6.3, resolution number 08-6521, appointing Javon Shackelford to the Arts and Humanities Commission and Hannah Bassett to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board as youth members. Item 6.4, resolution number 08-6522, authorizing exclusive use of Oakdale and a portion of Kenwood Park for the annual Smoky Hill River Festival and repealing resolution number 00-5592.
Before we continue, I'd like to make a motion to have item 6.2 removed from the agenda.
Official. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pull item 6.2 from the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes 5-0. Is there any other item that Commissioner would like pulled from the consent agenda? If not, bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Vanier, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes 5-0. Development business.
Item 7.1, acceptance of the offered easement, street right-of-way, and restricted access dedications, and authorize the mayor to sign the Quail Meadows Commercial Edition plat.
Who do we got? Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners, this is an application for final plat approval for an area known as Quail Meadows Estates Commercial Edition, and that property is located on the west side of South Ohio, north of Schilling Road. In the drawing that's on the board there, that is the drawing of the entire 76-acre parcel, and the area that is intended for commercial development is fronting along Ohio Street. It's essentially the east 20 acres of this parcel. The city commission considered a zoning change for this parcel to go from agricultural to commercial zoning in September of 2007. That was approved on first reading, subject to satisfactory plating of the property. The applicant has now come back with a final plat. The main feature that would be additional is the construction of a street, Joni Lane, that would extend east from Ohio. It would bisect the two lots that are proposed for commercial development. The applicant's proposing one driveway curb cut on Ohio Street and one driveway curb cut on Schilling Road. There's no driveway proposed on the north lot, north of Joni Lane. That access would be from Joni Lane. The Schilling Road and the Schilling Road ditch to the south were annexed in 1999. Salina County currently has ownership and maintenance responsibility for Ohio Street along the eastern boundary, but that is going to change as a result of the reconstruction and widening of Ohio Street. There is a 12-inch water line that was constructed in 2004 along the west side of Ohio Street that will serve this property. There's an interceptor sewer line that runs along the north border. The actual development will be served from sewer lines that will be constructed in Melanie Lane directly to the west. West our plans to bring electricity under Ohio Street and bring it down the north side of Joni Lane to provide electrical service. The plan for stormwater is there were, when the ditch was constructed for the south side of Schilling Road, there were two boxes that were put in at the time of construction. Neither of those are well situated for this particular property, so what the applicant is proposing to do is collect the stormwater from this area and to construct a separate box that would carry the runoff under Schilling Road and directly to the Schilling Road ditch. So the dedications that would be involved in this plat would be restricted access along Schilling and Ohio, except for approved openings. There would be 20 feet of additional right-of-way dedicated for Schilling Road, so it would meet the 100-foot standard. There was not right-of-way for Ohio Street, but the applicant dedicated right-of-way ahead of time, ahead of plating, in order to meet the schedule for the widening of Ohio Street, and that is reflected on the plat. We summarize for you on pages 6 and 7 some cost recovery fees that are associated with development of this tract. One would be the cost recovery fee for payment for the cost of Schilling Road, the Schilling Road ditch, and the Ohio Schilling water line. Those fees will be collected at a time when a building permit is applied for. The planning commission considered this final plat on May 6th. They voted 7 to 0 at the close of that meeting to approve the proposed plat layout, subject to four conditions that you see on page 8 of your report. If the commission concurs with the action of the planning commission, a motion should be made to authorize the mayor to sign the plat and to accept the offered easement, right-of-way, and restricted access dedications on behalf of the city. With that, I'd be happy to address any questions.
Questions from Mr. Andrew.
I believe the applicant's also present if you have questions of him.
No questions, public comment?
Standby, Quest, 2601, South Ohio. I would just like to thank the city staff. They've worked long and hard on this project, and also the planning commission for their effort, and I hope that you would approve this project, and I agree with all the stipulations that the city has put in place. And with that, I will take any questions, if you have any.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we accept the offered easement, right-of-way, and restricted access dedications in the Quail Meadows Commercial Edition located on the west side of South Ohio Street, north of Schilling Road, and authorize the mayor to sign the Quail Meadows Commercial Edition plat.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the offered easement, street right-of-way, and restricted access dedications, and authorize the mayor to sign the Quail Meadows Commercial Edition plat. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes 5-0.
Item 7.2, second reading, ordinance number 07-10413, amending the city of Salina's comprehensive plan and providing a change in zoning district classification from C1 and A1 to PC5 and PC2 in Quail Meadows Commercial Edition.
This ordinance was passed on first reading, September 10th of '07, and since then there's been no comments have been received. Are there any other comments from the public? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move we adopt ordinance number 07-10413 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we adopt ordinance number 07-10413 on second reading. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Jolka.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Purney.
Aye.
Mayor Vanier.
Aye. Passes 5-0.
Item 8.1, second reading, ordinance number 08-10448, levying special assessments for improvements.
This ordinance was passed on first reading, May 12th, and since that time, no comments have been received. Are there any comments from the public at this time? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Vanier, I move that we approve ordinance 08-10448, levying special assessments for improvements on a number of projects in front of us. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 08-10448 on second reading. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Jolka.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Purney.
Aye.
Mayor Vanier.
Aye. Passes 5-0.
Item 8.2, second reading, ordinance number 08-10449, vacating 199.36 feet of platted restricted access along the west side of Lot 1, Block 1, Lundberg Edition.
This ordinance was passed on first reading, May 12th, 2008, and since then, no additional comments have been received. Are there any comments from the public at this time? Seeing none, I'll bring them back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move we adopt ordinance number 08-10449 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt 08-10449 on second reading. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Jolka.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Commissioner Purney.
Aye.
Mayor Vanier.
Aye. Passes 5-0.
Item 8.3, authorized agreement with Chevron Energy Solutions Company for an investment-grade energy audit.
Mr. Snyder.
Knock this off. Mayor and Commissioners, the Kansas Legislature enacted the Energy Performance Contract Enabling legislation and designated the Kansas Corporation Commission to oversee the Facility Conservation Improvement Program. The FCIP is designated for use by schools, state agencies, counties, and municipalities with the objective of the program to provide improvements to facilities that will basically conserve energy and thus reduce energy or utility bills. The cost of any of the improvements suggested will be recouped by the energy savings generated by the work over a set period of time. There are 10 private energy service companies, we refer to the ESCO, authorized to perform the analysis as well as the construction work. The commission has established a set rate schedule that all of these companies must follow. There are four phases to the project and the process. First is the feasibility, energy analysis. This is where the ESCO performs a study to see if there are improvements that could be made to help reduce bills in energy use. This has been completed. Second phase is the investment-grade audit. This is what we're here to talk today with you. The owner hires the ESCO to perform the energy audit of specific buildings and generate a list of items that can be performed with the accompanying energy savings. And then third is the implementation, if you choose to move forward with the identified energy-saving work. And then fourth is monitoring of the improvements for the savings themselves, for the realization of any savings. Chevron Energy Solutions approached city staff to discuss this program and their services that are obviously one of the 10. Chevron Energy Solutions was authorized to review a number of city-owned or supported buildings for preliminary examination, and after review, it was determined the following nine buildings do have the potential for energy savings that we wanted to proceed with at this point. Those buildings being the Police Department Memorial Hall, the Salina Community Theater, Smoky Hill Museum, Fire Stations 1 and 2, Health Department Golf Course Clubhouse, and the Bicentennial Center. We looked at another, a number of other city-owned buildings and reviewed those, but they are not included in the energy audit after reviewing previous energy use, as well as the size of the building, and a thorough onsite visitation by the company. If approved, Chevron will perform the investment-grade audit at the standard rate of 5 cents per square foot of the total amount of these buildings. If, following the audit, the city chooses not to proceed with the recommended improvements, which is the implementation phase, the city would pay Chevron the audit cost. If we move forward with any of the improvements suggested and have a contract, then the audit cost will be absorbed within the construction costs. If at the end of the time period, it is found that the specific savings were not generated, then Chevron would be required to pay the difference to the city. And to clarify that a little bit, this is not done after the standard 20-year timeframe that I listed. It's done on an annual basis and reviewed on annual basis, and if there's any payments, then they are based on annual, not after the completion of the length of the timeframe. All the contracts and associated work will be monitored, and that should be the KCC rather than FCC as far as monitoring agency. This energy audit for the nine buildings, based on 240,000 square feet, will cost the city $12,012. In the staff's recommendation, the city commission approved an agreement with Chevron Energy Solutions, Overland Park, for an investment-grade energy audit for $12,012. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Also, in attendance today, John O'Haraan, who's the Business Development Manager for Chevron Energy Solutions, is here, and also Byron Erickson, our Facility Superintendent, who has spent considerable time working with John on this particular project.
Questions to staff?
The police department strictly limited to the portion of the building that's controlled by the police department, or does it include the municipal courts?
No, the municipal court is not included in that process, and I would guess I'm going to answer this because of the age, the newness of the building and the systems. Is that correct?
And I'm just curious, the buildings that aren't included in this is because they're already energy savings compliant, or what was the protocol that had to be?
Not necessarily, and I think maybe one example would be the fire stations 3 and 4, even though they have large bays, they're more using the residential equipment, HVAC systems, and the energy savings is probably not enough savings there to generate moving forward with that.
And this building? And this city-county building or the city building?
I might turn that and ask John. We talked about this one, obviously this is not a city building, but...
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners.
Do you please step to the microphone, give us your name and address? Thank you.
John O'Haraan with Chevron Energy Solutions, Overland Park, Kansas. The reason this building was excluded is when we're doing energy conservation, obviously the purpose of that is to provide a net benefit as far as dollars out of pocket, and so when you have a joint use, kind of a combination between city and county, we could analyze the building, but we would have to make sure there was an agreement with the county to where if there was a benefit to come from more improved lighting, HVAC, windows, whatever that was showing a tangible decrease, the entity that is basically making the improvements is the one that needs to receive the benefits. So it can be analyzed, for sure, but usually when you have a joint tenant or a joint ownership of a facility, it gets a little bit more cumbersome as far as...
So how is, the police station, since part of that is sheriffs and the other part is police, that's different than here?
Commissioner, I can probably answer that. There's a dividing line there, so there's a physical difference in those buildings, so they would just look at ours. I think one thing we would offer to do is certainly pass this idea on to the building authority, and certainly the building authority could choose whether they would like to have the review here. I do recall it wasn't that many years ago that the windows were replaced in this building, and I know they have a reserve also for their HVAC unit, and they've already gone to going with more efficient, smaller fluorescent bulbs, so a lot of the things that you typically see pop up in recommendations, they've already been working on. So in the end, I don't know if it'd be beneficial, but we'll forward it over to them and make sure they take a look at it.
Thank you.
Steve, I was curious as to the community theater, and aren't they in the process of expansion, remodel, and...
Yes, and I know when we started this process, the ownership of the building was city-held. We still obviously have, even though that ownership has been transferred now, the energy, the utility is under the city's responsibility, so that's why that building has continued. I think the audit will, if we move forward today, will be done on the existing facility. Hopefully, the construction of an addition or improvements will take in those kind of considerations for the best use of HVAC systems, whatever it may be.
Okay. And do we have any, does the city have any obligation to the Stiefel Theater, and if they did, why was it left off?
I don't believe at this point we have any...
You don't? Okay.
Anything with that one.
Okay.
The 10, Steve, the 10, so there were 10 energy service companies designated by the KCC that they would approve for this kind of work, or...
That's correct.
Are there some that aren't connected with oil companies?
Maybe John will answer that one.
Yes, Commissioner, we are somewhat unique in that aspect. We actually were acquired by Chevron in 2003. Our core company was Viron Energy Services out of Kansas City. We've been pioneer for energy conservation since 1974 when we were founded, actually credited with doing the first-ever performance contract. And when Chevron acquired us, the theory being that the best source for new energy to meet the global demand was to provide energy conservation, and that's all our group does. We have about 300 employees that do nothing but energy conservation, renewable work, solar wind, water conservation, all the above. But yes, we are owned by Chevron USA, but we are a division that I know absolutely nothing about the oil industry, other than I'm paying a lot for gas as well as everybody else.
The... The, if we were to move into a construction phase, are we obligated to a particular firm for construction, or is this out to bid as we normally do?
It is, this is a process where you are acquiring, or you're basically soliciting a professional service in a lot of aspects, like acquiring an architect. The energy services company serves as both the engineer to do the design of the retrofits and also the general contractor, but all of the actual physical work is subbed out, local subcontractors, financing, any components of that are all subbed out on a competitive basis.
Commissioners, one of the advantages to this is the, if we tried to contract with Chevron independent of the state program for the exact same review, it'd probably be two to three times this cost, so at $12,000, it's a pretty good value. So we could look at the recommendations in the end and say, "Well, we appreciate it, we agree with them, we're just not ready to have you do that. We pay them $12,000 and we do it on our own." So we'll have the report, we could do that. So certainly, you'll have the ability to weigh those options even at that point in time. If the report was $50,000, I wouldn't tell you that it's, you have quite that much flexibility, but given that it's 12 for these facilities, I think you have quite a bit of flexibility when it comes time to look at that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor Vanir, I'd like to make a motion that the city commission approve an agreement with Chevron Energy Solutions, Overland Park, Kansas, for an investment-grade energy audit for $12,012.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve an agreement with a, for an investment-grade energy audit with the Chevron Energy Solutions Company, Overland Park, Kansas, in an amount of $12,012. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes 5-0.
Mayor Vanir, I move that the city commission recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters, subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege, and to discuss confidential data relating to the financial affairs and trade secrets of a corporation for the reason that public discussion of the information would competitively disadvantage the corporation. Excuse me. And reconvene in this room at?
5:05.
5:05.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to go into executive session and reconvene at 5:05. Do you anticipate any action?
We do not.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're in executive session.